Well, thank you for waiting, and I'm sorry that we're starting late tonight. We just learned that Councilmember Sanchez may no longer be a legal resident of the district she was elected in. This is really new, uncharted territory for us as a city, for her as a council member. We know this was not intentional, and we are looking for a path forward and will work with Councilmember Sanchez to see if we can find one. And with that, we'll go ahead and start our meeting tonight without her. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could just make a comment really quick, and I'm learning about this at the same time that everybody else is. I cannot imagine how hard it would be to be a renter and to try to navigate finding a new affordable place to live in the climate that's in Boise, while also navigating an old district, a new district, and these tremendous amount of changes. So I'm not fully aware of what the situation is, but I just can't imagine how difficult it is to try to navigate this situation. And I feel sad and frustrated for the situation that Lisa's going through, Councilmember Sanchez. It's just unbelievably unfortunate. It breaks my heart.
Thank you, and we wanted just to make this known, and that's why the council member is not with us. But I appreciate your comments. Councilmember Hallie Burton. With that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. We'll start with an invocation, which we observed by a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll have the roll call.
And if I might, during that moment of silence, you might think about all of the people in our city who are finding it hard to find housing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Agent.
Here.
Clegg.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Sanchez. Willetts.
Here.
Weddings.
Here.
Five present, one absent.
The next up, we have requests for approval minutes from our strategic planning session and day meeting of December 13th.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the City Council minutes of the strategic planning session and regular day meeting of December 13th, 2022.
Second.
Madam Mayor, I wasn't present, so I won't be voting on this.
All right, thanks.
Madam Mayor, I was also out of town for family.
Okay. Clerk.
Agent. Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
abstained.
Weddings.
Yes.
Three in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And next up, we have a couple items under special business. First, I've brought forward two appointments to the CCDC Board for council to consider. It's really an honor to appoint both Holly Woodings, our president pro tem, and Todd Cooper, who I believe is joining us via Zoom, to the CCDC Board for term, five-year terms ending January 2028.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the appointment of Holly Woodings and Todd Cooper to the CCDC Board for five-year terms ending in January of 2028, and congratulations.
Without objection. And with that, you are appointed. I look forward to having you both join me and others on the CCDC Board. You're welcome to say anything. I see Todd is here. I'm pointing first to the council president pro tem, and then Todd, you're welcome to as well.
Let's let Todd go first.
Okay, great. Todd, you are welcome to jump in. I want to say thank you for your willingness to serve in addition to all the other things that you do for our community. I was so pleased that you were interested in this position and appreciate that you're willing to give the time.
Thank you, Mayor McLean. I just want to thank the council and look forward to taking my experience that includes, I think, a fair knowledge of real estate in and around the districts, public-private partnerships, whom I work in nonprofits, and with the Economic Development Committee. I look forward to putting those skills to work to continue the great work CCDC has done. So thank you for the nomination, Mayor, and council. Thanks for your support as well.
We appreciate it. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
I thank you, Mayor McLean. I remember so many years ago when I learned what an urban renewal district was, and it was when I was a wind energy developer looking for an operations and maintenance facility or a site for an operations and maintenance facility down in the Magic Valley and found a really great opportunity in the city of Jerome. Worked with their economic development guy at the time, his name's Micah Austin. He's now the city administrator for the city of Ammon, who introduced me to all things urban renewal district. And I had no idea that you could build an operations and maintenance facility and have your sidewalks built, and that they would put in streets for you. And they would make sure that you had proper ingress and egress for the large types of equipment that we were going to need to access that facility. And I just thought that it was such a cool opportunity for businesses to partner with cities in that way to help them achieve their strategic objectives of attracting good-paying jobs and quality employers. And so it's really neat to be here all of these years later, after having a completely different understanding of urban renewal, the way that we do it here in Boise, and being able to take that history of learning about urban renewal from the standpoint of a developer and now being able to serve on our urban renewal agency as a member of City Council. It's just a tremendous opportunity. I'm really looking forward to it. I just love the work that CCDC does around our city. I think that in so many ways, it's made Boise the vibrant community that it is today, particularly in downtown, and look forward to spreading that success throughout other parts of the city so that they can see those same levels of success. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I could say a couple of words. It's really wonderful to have these two people appointed to CCDC. Both of them are so knowledgeable about the issues that CCDC works on, and coming up in the next few years, there's going to be a lot of really important and exciting work to do in especially the new district on State Street, and really look forward to seeing the kinds of solutions that CCDC brings to the table there with these two on board. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. I look forward to seeing you in the CCDC boardroom soon. And with that, we'll move to the next items of special business, the election of council president and council president pro tem.
Madam Mayor, while the circumstances are a little bit different than I imagined tonight, I hope that we can all understand that this council has a deep commitment to the work of this city, and no one embodies that more frankly right now than Council President Pro Tem Woodings. I would like to nominate her for council president in 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
You know, all of the things Elaine said about Holly, plus my effusive praise as well. I'm looking forward to working with you this year.
Do you accept the nomination?
Madam Mayor, I accept the nomination. Do I need to talk now, or can I just say a couple of words afterwards?
Yeah, why don't you say a couple of words afterwards?
Okay.
I'll go ahead, but before I had the clerk call the roll, I just wanted to make sure that you accepted the nomination. All right, clerk, will you call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, these are not the circumstances under which I thought we would be having this discussion. It's a little bit bittersweet to not have Councilmember Sanchez with us here tonight. But with all that said, I'm really thankful to my family who are here tonight and my amazing colleagues on the council for, I mean frankly, helping me be a better leader. Councilmember Sanchez is such a part of that. So, you know, as we look forward, we have a lot of preparation to do, and this is a great illustration of the things that we need to consider as we work toward a fully districted council. It's going to require a lot of work of our office. It's going to require a lot of work from us to make sure that we have the policies, procedures in place to deal with our new circumstances that the legislature handed to us, and I'm very, while I'm not looking forward to doing that work, I'm committed to doing that work so that we can avoid situations like this in the future. And I'm looking forward to working with our amazing staff. Amanda Brown hates it when I say her name from the dais, but we're going to work together to make sure that we have a council office that is responsive to not only the needs of members of council, but also to our residents' needs, and make sure that we're really responsive to to what the people of Boise need from us from a services standpoint. So I'm really looking forward to the hard work and look forward to working with my fellow council members in the coming months on that. Thank you.
And next up, the election of council president pro tem.
Madam Mayor, in a similar vein, over the last couple of years, I've watched Councilmember Hallie Burton really dig into his role as council member, learn the ropes, always do his homework, come well-prepared. And it's with great honor that I nominate him for council president pro tem for 2023.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion?
Well, Madam Mayor.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Hallie Burton, I'm really looking forward to working with you too this year. Us guys got to stick together up here, and I'm looking forward to having your back.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I've known Councilmember Hallie Burton for a very long time, since we were practically kids, and it's very gratifying to have seen how much he has learned and really grown into this role. I'm super looking forward to serving on leadership with you, and I look forward to what we can do as a team. Thanks.
Before the clerk calls the roll, do you two accept?
Yep.
Clerk, will you call the roll? Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings. All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I wrote a few things down here because there was some stuff that I wanted to make sure that I didn't forget. And I guess the first thing, I just want to thank Council President Clegg for the nomination and for your leadership on council for much longer than I've been here. But ever since I've been here, I really have learned a lot from you, and I really appreciate that opportunity and this opportunity that you're helping provide for me as well. And I want to thank each of you, my fellow council members, for this vote of confidence, for this particular role in this particular time that feels really important to me. And I wish that Councilmember Sanchez would have been here because I would have been honored to have had her vote as well. Councilmember Willetts, you weren't here, but my first year on council, we had an opportunity to share our three main priorities for that year, or maybe it was beyond that year, I'm not sure. And my priorities were canal pathways, to bring new voices to the table, and to be a good team member. And I hope that your vote today is the result of me trying to be a good team member for the last several years, and that's something that I really want to make sure that I'm doing going forward. With council and council leadership, there's not necessarily like a job description that says this is exactly what you do or how you do it. So I just kind of want to share what my own personal job description is and what I want to make sure that I do in this particular position. To me, council leadership really means recognizing the strengths that each one of you have and can bring to the city, the unique strengths and the different ideas where we can find consensus that make the city better for everyone, and I truly believe that they're out there. And my role in leadership, I truly believe is to make sure that I'm using your skills the best that I possibly can for the people that we serve in the community and bringing those ideas forward. I might only be in this position for a year, so I just wanted to kind of mention five specific things that I wanted to do with each of you. Councilmember Sanchez, that's not here, has tirelessly worked to make the city a more inclusive, welcoming, and equitable place, and I'm committed to working with her to make sure that I'm doing my part in helping her push those things forward. Lucy, you and I vote differently more times than I think any other council member. I don't know if that's true or not, but if I had to bet on it, that's what I would probably bet on. And that's one of the things that I like about you the most, the kindness, the curiosity, and really the courage that you bring to council every single day, and I'm committed to making sure that we can all work together whenever we disagree in bringing new and better ideas forward. Patrick, you are like an amazing problem solver, and you take really good ideas and you turn them into really great ideas. You did that with Councilmember Thompson. You've done that with so many of our ordinances. But I also know that you have great ideas that you want to bring forward as well that can help our city address some of the biggest challenges that we face with climate change. And I'm committed to working with you to figure out what types of ideas we can bring forward and how we can improve on the efforts that the city is already doing. Elaine, I know that you won't be here for long, and I know that I'll never be able to capture the wealth of knowledge, encyclopedic wealth of knowledge that you bring to the table. But I am committed to learning as much as I possibly can to make sure that we keep people connected to this community, moving and getting to places that they need to go in a safe and accessible way. And we'll get to do that with you no matter what going forward. And then Councilmember Woodings, Council President Woodings, I didn't comment when you were nominated because I wanted to save it for now. I'm really looking forward to learning from you. You've been in this leadership position now, and there's so much I think that I can learn from you to address systems that can improve the way we work on council. And I think that this is one of the most important years that councils had to really address some of those systems because there's so much changing, and there's nobody that I would rather work with in a leadership position to figure out what systems we need to put in place, both for this council and for future councils. The last couple of things here is, this is a stretch and a challenge for me, and I'm going to need a lot of help from each one of you, and I'm going to be asking each one of you for a lot of help as well. So I hope you expect that going forward, sharing some of this work with me. But I'm really excited. And I'm excited to work with you, Madam Mayor, in really building out this vision for a city for everyone. I totally believe in that mission and that vision for our city, and I'm really honored to spend at least this last year, you know, working with all of you to do that.
Thank you very much. So I have a question I should have asked beforehand. Do we do a little switch of room right now? Or are we staying put? We're good staying put? Would you like to come a little closer? Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay. Okay, well, we will move. Yes. Of course.
I turned it off. Sorry. It's a bittersweet night for me. I'll try to have a few tears tonight, so later on, when the real tears should be flowing, I won't be so bad. I can't think of a crew that I'd rather leave this to, so I just wanted to say that although I won't be here very long in this role, I am not going very far, and I'll always be available by phone, walk down the street, whatever, whenever you have a question, and more than willing to share whatever knowledge I might have on answering that. So thank you both for stepping up. It's a big role, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, council member. We're going to move into the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case it'll be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence. And yes, I should have said thank you to those of you that came for the first part of the meeting. Feel free to leave. Don't worry about just getting up and heading out. And with that, I'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, we call the roll?
Madam Mayor, before we take a vote, I just want to point out that this consent agenda contains the final batch of our deed restriction protections for park properties. I know that our staff has been really working hard to make all of these deed restrictions a reality. Doing that complete inventory was no small task, and making sure that we have the right language in those deed restrictions is a really big deal in protecting these parks' properties for future generations. So I just wanted to point out that this is the last of them for tonight, and that each park property that we acquire going forward will be similarly protected from the get-go.
And Madam Mayor, in that vein, we also have new property in West Boise for a park.
We Shamrock.
Thank you. All right, clerk, will you call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And before we move on, now that it's official, I do, I thank the council member for calling out the final parks that were on the agenda tonight, and then also Councilmember Willetts for pointing out Shamrock, the piece of property on Shamrock that we collected. I think it was a little over a year ago that we committed to do a run-through of the parks and open space properties that we had. It was a little, it was probably about a year and a half ago that I was at the Bora neighborhood and we were, association, we were talking about this. The, I appreciate the council's willingness to look at how we do this differently and better to protect our parks and open space into the future, because prior to this, we didn't deed restrict properties in the same way on a regular basis. And so tonight, just earlier today, I was at Shoshone Park, or yesterday I was at Shoshone Park, which was one of them tonight. There were 51 properties, both parks and open space reserves that were identified by our team that needed protections, that didn't have them before. And so we went through alphabetically and put restrictions into the deeds of those properties so that they are protected now and into the future. And as the council member said as well, and once this was brought to our attention, we fixed the city process and policy, and immediately when we acquired lots such as Shamrock, they would be, and they were deed restricted to be protected. And this is all part of our strategy to make sure that every kid can walk to a park within 10 minutes. And as we methodically go about seeking land to do that, and we're going to deed restrict it, so it's there for the city to use as we seek to achieve that vision, so that we can all get to parks and open spaces in safe and efficient ways in every neighborhood in the city. So thank you, and I want to thank the team for the work that was done to make this possible. And with that, we'll move into ordinances. We have things on second and third reading this evening.
Madam Mayor, I move that all rules of the council interfering with the immediate consideration of ORD 57-22 be dispensed with, or be suspended, that the portions of Idaho Code 50-902 requiring an ordinance to be read on three different days, twice by title, and once in full be dispensed with, and the records show it has been read the third time in full.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, we call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And next up, looks like we've got two on first, second, and third reading.
Doesn't the clerk need to read it?
Oh, sorry. Yes, go ahead and read. Sorry.
Thank you. ORD-57-22, an ordinance amending the solid waste franchise agreement, franchise agreement by and between the city of Boise City, by and through its Public Works Department, the city, and Allied Waste Services of North America LLC, doing business as Republic Services of Boise, Republic Services, adopting an updated reimbursement rate schedule to increase reimbursement rates paid to Republic Services for solid waste collection and disposal services, providing for a waiver of the reading rules, providing an effective date, and approving a summary of the ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I move that ORD 57-22 be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, we call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And now, for second and third reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that all rules of the council interfering with the immediate consideration of ORD 1-23 and ORD 2-23 be suspended, that the portions of Idaho Code 50-902 requiring an ordinance to be read on three different days, twice by title, and once in full be dispensed with, and that the records show it has been read the third time in full.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, we call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD-1-23, an ordinance CAR 22-00044 for property located at 8,000 South Federal Way, annexing 358.2 acres of certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Boise City, establishing and determining the land use classification of said 358.2 acres as T-2D/DA, technological manufacturing with design review and development agreement zone, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such annexation and zone change, directing the city engineer to lodge and file a legal description and map for said annexed lands and territory, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Auditor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, providing that a copy of said legal description and a map of said annexed lands and territory be recorded with the Ada County Recorder and filed with the Ada County Assessor and Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing an effective date. ORD-2-23, an ordinance CAR 22-00045 for property located at 3851 East Columbia Road, amending zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property, particularly described in Section 1 of this ordinance, an adjacent rights away from T-1D, technological industrial with designer view, to T-2D/DA, technological manufacturing with designer view and development agreement, setting effective date.
Madam Mayor, I move that ORD 1-23 and 2-23 be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Before we call the roll, I just want to point out that this is the annexation and rezone for the property that will house the new fab facility out at Micron. We're reading these in one day so that that project can be fully entitled and ready to, ready to roll. So that's why, that's why we suspended the rolls for it.
Thank you. Any further comment? Clerk, will you call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And now we're going to move into subdivisions. So just before we do that, a couple of things. We've got quite, quite a few of them tonight, and then we've got quite a few public hearings. So on the subdivisions, it looks like a lot of you are here today rather than being on Zoom, but I'll check to see if anybody's on Zoom. And we'll have staff present. I'll see if the applicant is in agreement with the terms and conditions of the staff report and whether or not there's anything additional that needs to be added, and if not, we'll take it from there. If there's somebody from the public, it's rare that we've got public that test, testify on these, but you're here. I see you, you're here, Joni. We'll take you, and then in that case, give the applicant a chance to close things up afterwards. And with that, we'll start with SOS 22-23.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applicant is requesting to vacate a public utility drainage and irrigation plot note easement associated with the Cedar Heights subdivision. The easement vacation is required to consolidate two parcels and to build over the, to build over them with, in addition to an existing single-family house. The subject property is addressed at 4514 Cedarview Lane in our R1C zone. And as you can see from the aerial photograph, the property is located adjacent to residential neighborhoods to the south and west, and it was also adjacent to the north and east, our commercial properties and uses located along Chindon Boulevard. The Cedar Heights subdivision was platted 1985 with a plot note that requires a five-foot wide public utility drainage and irrigation easement along all interior side property lines. This easement and plot note are shown on the diagram here. The applicant provided all the letters of relinquishment from the utility company servicing, servicing in the vicinity. In conclusion, the planning team recommends approval of the plot note vacation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant calling marks here? Are you in agreement with the terms and conditions of the staff report? The record can reflect that you are. All right. There weren't any questions for staff, were there? All right, and with that, no public is here to testify, correct? We'll go ahead and close this public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that we Madam Mayor, I move that we approve SOS 22-23, Mark's Land Surveying, Boise City Vacation of Plat Note and Public Utilities easement at 4514 North Cedar View Lane.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, any discussion? Clerk, will you call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we have SOS 22-24. Hello, Matthew, welcome.
Good evening.
We've got Matthew Dennis presenting for staff. We've got Ben Semple here for the applicant. This is the one where there's public here. And then, so then we'll return to Ben. If, go ahead, you can go ahead and get started.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members. Late correspondence received from Public Works Engineering, the Hillside Division requested additional hydraulic, hydrology and hydraulics work to be performed in order to simulate the impact of a hundred year storm to the site and the existing drainage facility on site. Based on the late correspondence received, the planning team recommends defer of the item.
Oh, were you aware of this? Oh, all right. All right. We will defer this item. Is there a recommended date or is it to be a time cert? Come on up, Ben. Sorry, I didn't realize this.
Madam Mayor, members of city council. Yeah, in some discussions with Mr. Dennis and then Public Works, we have a meeting tomorrow with the new city engineer or the hillside engineer, and where we're going to try to work through this and determine how to move it forward. We'd love to be on as early of a city council hearing as we can, but I'd like to get through that meeting tomorrow and then kind of work on a date.
Okay, so if that's all right with you, then I'd just recommend that we take a motion to defer without a date included. And we'll honor that request to get it back on, back on as soon as possible.
Madam Mayor, that's excellent. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move that we defer SOS 22-24 Rodney Evans and Partners at 2994 North Lancaster Place.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second clerk, we call the roll.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And next up, we've, oops, sorry. We've got SOS 22-21. So Sabrina. I'm sorry, I can't. And then is the applicant, is it Theron, I'm sorry. Theron Newbolt, Mr. Newbolt, welcome. And then I don't see Jim from the Neighborhood Association, but just want to check. We didn't expect him to be here. And there's one member of the public that signed up in advance. Do we have anybody speaking on this item? Benita Beagleke? Beagleke?
Madam Mayor, she's online.
Great, okay. And then we'll have you come back up after that. Go ahead.
Right. Madam Mayor, members of the council, the item before you is a request to vacate a plat note associated with lot 20 block one of Big Sky subdivision number two on 0.86 acres located at 11520 West Edna Street in an R1A BSN zone. Big Sky subdivision number two was recorded in 1971 and includes a plat note which specifies the required setbacks within the subdivision. The plat requires 25 foot side and rear setbacks where the underlying zone would typically require 20 foot setbacks. Based on the revisions to the subdivision CCNRs that were recorded in 2006, the applicant believed the side and rear setbacks for the property to be 20 feet, and they completed landscaping and site preparation based on that assumption. The applicant now requests to vacate the plat note requiring 25 foot side and rear setbacks for lot 20, so the shop can be constructed 20 feet from the rear and east side property lines. The planning team has been contacted by one neighbor who's expressed concern regarding the requested plat note vacation. However, the vacation would simply allow the shop to be constructed with setbacks that match the requirements of the underlying R1A BSN zone. As proposed, the shop would maintain a separation of 55 feet from the nearest accessory structure and 185 feet from the nearest home. In conclusion, the planning team recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? All right. I'm sorry, are you in agreement with the terms and conditions of the staff report? All right, we'll have the record reflect that. We'll take the, the public testimony and then have you come on up for the rebuttal. Welcome ma'am. So Benita, I'm sorry, I, I'm sure that I messed up your last name.
Yeah, it's funny to be gawky. I'm the president of the Big Sky subdivision group, and vacating the, the, the restriction doesn't meet with the overall feel of the Big Sky subdivision. And the size of this shop that's proposed is going to be larger and taller than most of the other accessory buildings in this particular Big Sky subdivision. So based on discussion with relevant neighbors, I, I'm recommending that it not, that the requirement for the 25 foot distance not be vacated.
Are there any questions for Ms. Beagleke? All right.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for staff, if I could.
Yes, there's a question for staff. Thank, thank you, Benita.
What, what is the height of the proposed building?
Madam Mayor, Council President, the proposed height would be 18 feet to the peak of the roof. 18 feet to the peak.
Anything further? All right, sir, you'd like, you're welcome to come up, but actually, why don't we ask if there's any questions for the applicants? There doesn't have to be, but I, okay. All right. With that, the applicant has said there's no need to come up for rebuttal. I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move approval of SOS 22-21 Boise City Vacation of Plat Note, Theron Newbolt, 11520 West Edna Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second clerk, we call the roll.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thanks. And next up, we have SUV 22-45. This is presented by Jesse Lyle, welcome. And Ben Semple, applicant again. Got, the Neighborhood Association is no longer present, all right? So we don't expect any members of the public to be testifying on this.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is SUV 22-45. A request to approve a preliminary plat for Samantha subdivision with seven buildable and one common lot on 0.41 acres in our 3D zone located at 54, or 3450 Hill Road. The proposed subdivision lies within the suburban land use designation and is less than 600 feet from the neighborhood activity center on Hill Road and 36th Street. The applicant proposes to construct seven attached single family homes. The proposed site layout is two attached units on either end of the development with three attached units in the middle. There's one access point to the subdivision in the middle of the development with a 20 foot drive parallel to Hill Road. The applicant is proposing to detach the sidewalks along Hill Road with a 14 foot planer strip in order to preserve a 23 inch silverable. In order to accommodate for the existing tree in the drive aisle, the five foot sidewalk must be attached to the south side of the drive, but will be differentiated by a curb. The site is large enough to accommodate the use with reduced internal setbacks and reduce lot sizes allowed through the PUD. And in conclusion, the planning team and commission recommend approval of SUV 22-45, and I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for staff? All right. All right, Mr. Semple, are you in agreement with terms and conditions of the staff report? All right, the record will reflect as such. Is anybody, a member of the public here to testify? Noted. No further questions for staff. I'm going to close the hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Samantha subdivision, SUV 22-405 Boise City preliminary plat, Rodney Evans and Partners, 3450 West Hill Road.
Second.
We have a motion, a second clerk, will you call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we've got SUV 22-54, Jesse Lyle again. I saw Penelope constant, oh my gosh, I'm so bad tonight. Little flustered from the beginning of the evening. Normally I get names much better tonight. Good to see you. And do we have anybody from Vista Neighborhood Association? We don't expect so, but I just want to check. All right. And then one member of the public signed up in advance, Richard Wakeling. Sir, welcome. And then if there are things that come up that you need to address at the end, you'll be welcome to. All right, go ahead.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and council members. Tonight before you is SUV 22-54, a request to approve a preliminary plat for 30 buildable and one common lot on 2.09 acres in the R2D DA zone located at 2001 Paloo Street. This item may look familiar as it has been before the council previously in February of 2022 with a rezone and development agreement. The PUD has since been approved and was not appealed, so the only item before you tonight is the subdivision. On October 3rd, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission deferred the PUD and subdivision with direction to the applicant to modify the driveway location and to break up the massing of the townhomes along Paloo Street. The applicant declined to make these modifications and went back before the commission on November 7th with the, our plans shown here. There, the commission approved the PUD and recommended approval of the Crew James subdivision with some neighborhood opposition to the placement of the driveway, massing along Paloo's and the lack of pedestrian connection to Limhi Street. In accordance with the development agreement, the applicant proposes to construct 30 townhomes in five buildings. A recommendation was made with the rezone to explore pedestrian connection to Limhi to the south. While this connection was explored, there was no connection proposed with this project as the properties to the south of the site are not associated with this proposal and are now under different ownership. The applicant is proposing one vehicle access point on Paloo Street on the eastern side of the property with seven of the 30 units running Paloo Street and pedestrian connections to the sidewalk. The site is large enough to accommodate the use with reduced internal setbacks and has been approved through the PUD process. In conclusion, the planning team and commission recommend approval of SUV 22-54, and I can answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Is the applicant in agreement with the terms and conditions of the staff report? All right, the record will reflect that, thank you. And with that, I'm going to open it up to the public. Sir, you're welcome to come up and testify. Mr. Wakeling, welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, council members, appreciate you having me here tonight. I have a PowerPoint that should be coming up here shortly. Thank you. I just want to say I'm, I'm in fully, I fully support developing Boise's housing needs. But in a conscientious manner, have some concerns regarding this Paloo's project and the proposal of, the, the design proposal of the complex. Several items discussed prior by Boise City Housing have failed to be addressed. These include the requested pedestrian access between Paloo's and Limhi and the massive units along Paloo Street. And so as mentioned that there is no longer a connectivity for pedestrians because the property was sold. This was a condition of the original application when it was in, held, excuse me, when the meeting was held February 15th of 2022, the council made that condition of approval of the application to provide off-site pedestrian connection to Limhi and, and better connectivity to the neighborhood. The applicant has advised that the connection with to Limhi to provide better connectivity to the neighborhood was not supported by those folks on Limhi, although we never saw any residents from Limhi come up and go against that request. Now they've moved forward and there's a structure on that lot impeding any possibility of a walkway between the two streets. Secondly, I would like to address the wall of seven townhomes fronting Paloo Street. In the city council meeting on February 15th of 2022, the council voiced concerns over the block style townhomes that do not fit the current street scape of the neighborhood. This is a very large concern for those residents whose properties are opposite and adjacent to the proposed complex. This is my home, the red one here. This is a style of buildings in the neighborhood on that street, on abs, on Paloo's. By building that block of seven, it's going to ruin the aesthetic of the whole neighborhood. If we could move to the next line.
You've got a clicker right there.
Great, thank you. This is an exact replication, almost, of what is proposed on Paloo Street. This location is located on Eustick Street, east of Linda. Keep in mind that this street right here in front of the complex is four lanes with a median, a bike lane on either side, and you have setback sidewalks on both sides of the road. This is a different angle. This is seven units. This is what they're proposing to place essentially right there on Paloo Street. This is a house that's directly east of the proposed complex. And I've actually made this house larger in this overlay. This is the representation of what is going to be.
Time.
It's going to be looking like.
I'll, I'm just going to ask you to wrap it up with a sentence.
Sure.
Thanks.
I would just like the council to review this look, this aesthetic look. It's not only ugly, but it ruins the neighborhood for us. And I appreciate your time today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? I saw that Julie Holvey raised her hand. Julie, if you would like to testify, we'll go ahead and call you. If anybody else is on Zoom, raise your hands, we'll let you know. And then I'll check here too. Julie there?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council people. We have talked about this application for quite a long time. And throughout our conversations, the neighborhood has been talking about the mass of seven condos or apartments or homes along the Paloo's street and talking about driveway and where it's located. And we at least should be heard and our concern vetted with some of the facts. I know that the developer is frustrated too, but had he maybe tried to work with us from the beginning on a couple of these things, this would have been long done. You're not supposed to build a sevenplex in an R3 area according to the table of allowed uses. What's wrong with looking at that before you draw your plans? Additionally, they've talked about, the ACHD said they had a plan and it was okay to put the driveway where it was. In the, the second round of applications for this project, Penelope and her group applied for a 20 unit development. And that's what ACHD based the recommendation on. The request before that was for a 40 unit development and ACHD required some changes. And so really what you've got is a 30 unit development with no ACHD plan. And you know, we like to participate, but we like to have some reasonable assurance that the things we're saying do have meaning and that we still have access to the law through the code. And so I urge you to deny this application as we have stood at this juncture since the beginning between the neighborhood and the development. It's a modest change for the developer to fix the street. It's not a driveway, it's a street. And a modest change for them to break up a sevenplex along the street, and we've wanted it from the beginning. So with compassion for the change they might have to make and their frustration, please see that it's these neighbors that also deserve some consideration. We live here, we've paid our bills for you for a long, long time, and we'd like to keep housing in the neighborhood, single family housing. And those are my comments, and thank you and good night.
Thank you, Julie. Good night to you as well.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would ask that Julie Holvey and other testifiers provide their address.
We've, I appreciate that. Online, I've tended not to. I appreciate that online, I've tended not to ask. And so I'll let that go by. If we need it afterwards, we can get it. But just from a security perspective, as we are doing more and more on Zoom, we stopped requiring it to be stated. People often just state it by through habit.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask a clarifying question for staff? So just because I want to make sure I'm not confused, I appreciate the last person's testimony. But what I'm reading is slightly different, I think, than what she's saying. I think that we granted the rezone from R one C to R two D. Is that correct? With the development, yeah, with the development agreement?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, that's correct.
And the development agreement, part of that was that we would restrict to thirty units. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And they're proposing the thirty units. So that's not really on the table for us because we've already approved that development. So when they're talking, when someone's requesting the amount of houses, it seems like the developer is actually within the guidelines that we approved back in December.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yes, the developer has gone by the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
In place.
Perfect. Appreciate it.
Any further questions?
Madam Mayor, I don't know if this is for staff or Penelope, but we did request that they look for a pedestrian connection through this. And can I understand that it's difficult to find a willing place to put that? However, my question is, do we have some kind of a plat note or some kind of a requirement that the southern boundary of this property be subject to a cross-access agreement if, in the future, some access could be found? In other words, what's happened in the past is, oh, gosh, we can't find that connection. And then twenty years later, an opportunity arises for a connection, and there's, there's no access agreement, and so we still lose it. Wonder if there's a way to condition this, even if we approve it without the connection that at some point in the future, that connection could be made if, if opportunity arises.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, currently there is not a condition on the plat note for that to be in place. I do know that this was explored. The applicant can go into that further. But that could be a potential solution.
Good. Thank you.
We're going to move ahead on with public testimony. Come on up. And I don't have you on this list, so after you give your testimony, there's a piece of paper somewhere there with the number S U B twenty-two fifty-four.
That's so funny because I signed up for it.
Oh, you already did?
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Okay, all right. So, Madam Mayor, oh my goodness. And councilmembers, my name is Natasha Tully, and I live on Paloo Street. So I, like my partner said, I absolutely support this project. Developing housing in the city of Boise is important. But doing it in a conscientious way is also important. So as mentioned before, the existing site map and plan does not meet the recommendations made prior by the city. That's because the land that was delegated for that was previously sold by the developer. That's the reason why it can't be done. That was one of the conditions. And when it originally went in front of the city of Boise in two thousand, in February of February fifteenth of this year or last year, that was one of the conditions, and that was the original site map. It would have been a significant impact to those seeking to have access to Limhi Street. The next thing that this site map does not address is the driveway is directly in directly in line with the house across the street, which is my home. And so what I'm looking at is thirty townhomes, two cars, because it's a two-car garage, hopefully bicycles, but, you know, that's something we're working on as a community. But we're looking at a potential of a hundred and twenty trips a day going right in line with my home. That's something that I brought up in front of city planning, the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. And finally, the one of the things that it doesn't address is that slot development, that range of seven homes, seven two-story homes in single-story, single-family homes areas. It's not saying have it look exactly like the neighborhood, but by breaking up the homes, maybe making two sets of three and having the driveway offset, that would meet the neighborhood's needs. That's what we've been saying since the beginning. Just be a little bit more flexible on the plan, make it more in fitting with the community. You know, I think the accommodations would, from the developer, would make that site plan better. You know, create that public walkway or at least that delineation for a future public walkway. And then offset the driveway from the house and address the massing. That's something we've been asking from, from the beginning of this two-year-plus project. So I want to thank you for your time, and I'll get signed in now.
Thank you. Are there other people here to testify on this in person? No? How about online? All right. And with that, I'll ask the developer to come up. Are there any further questions for staff? All right, come on up. We'll move into rebuttal. I imagine there might be some questions for you.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. I am Steve Martinez, nine one six five West State Street, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven one four. I kind of wanted to give Mayor and Council just a history of the project. I know you guys have all seen this come across your plate a few different times. We started this project about two and a half years ago when we originally bought the property. We met with staff and asked for highest and best use of this property. We had two plus acres of infill property within the city, and we asked that, you know, what, what can we do with this that makes the most sense for the city? At that time, the staff directed us to an L O zone. We all know how that process worked and went. We felt like with a development agreement, it kept the guardrails on. At that time, we had forty-four units and a lot different design than we have today. The rezone failed, and so we went back to the drawing board. We met with the neighbors and the Neighborhood Association after that. Obviously, met with them prior to, but met with them after that. And really, the changes that I want to bring up that were made from that original plan to this one were very considerable. So when we're talking about the last few changes that the neighbors are asking, I appreciate their input, but we really have jumped through almost every single hoop that we've been asked. We changed our zoning from L O to the R two. We changed the look of the buildings. Originally, we had a more modern design like the ones we're doing on Vista. We went to a more traditional, as that was a concern of the neighbors. We lowered our building height. Originally, we had three-story units phasing from two-story to three-story. And we got that feedback that even though within the zone, we could do that, we changed our building height. We added amenities within the project that we didn't have previously. We added more parking. That was a concern of the neighbors. We added we changed our building setbacks. We had concerns from neighbors on the west and the east that our buildings were too close to their properties, and so we moved our properties in tighter. And then we were, and then we reduced our density from forty-four units to thirty units. The frustrating part of this process has obviously been the time involved, the fact that we really have jumped through every hoop. I do want to point out that the connection to Limhi was never a requirement. I think that's been stated that it was. It was asked that we look into that. Both neighbors, and this was in our neighborhood meeting out on the site, both neighbors on both sides of that Limhi property were adamantly against the connection. They were concerned that all of Limhi has no sidewalks on it. Limhi is a much narrower street. It's about thirty feet. And if you get closer, closer to Vista, that Limhi does a weird jog and actually goes down to about twenty-five feet. Because of the homes along Limhi, there, everybody parks on the street, and so it really, we felt that it was not a, in the best interest of this project and in the best interest of those on Limhi. On Limhi, a lot of those homes have already been redeveloped within the last ten to fifteen years, and so, and, and with no sidewalks. And so we felt like we didn't have an opportunity with a lot of older homes to go in when those get redeveloped to add sidewalks. And so we really did look into that, and I know that Councilwoman Clegg had asked for that, and we researched it, we brought it up in our meetings, and, and it was, you know, pushed in the opposite direction. So I don't want to feel like that fell on deaf ears. I, I just want to point out, we went through, we're on our fifth planner on this project. And within, with every planner that comes along, and they, they offer great ideas, but they offer different directions. And so we've kind of, between all of the process and the different planners and all of the requests that have been asked by every neighbor, we really do feel like we have jumped through almost every hoop. I appreciate the neighbors' input. We purposely aligned our driveway to align with their driveway, so any cars coming out of our project, if there are concerns of headlights, will actually shine on their garage, not their home. Anywhere we put that driveway, eventually those cars are going to turn and shine on someone's home, and Commissioner Gillespie with the P and Z noted that in one of our twenty hearings, that no matter where we put that, where somebody's going to be unhappy. And so we purposely did line it up. There's a garage on one side and a garage on another, and we put our driveway in line with those. So I, I just want to, you know, round up in my last few seconds here that I do feel like we have done a lot to listen to the neighbors, to take into their considerations. We've changed a lot in that two and a half years. And I, we're really trying to keep housing affordable, and yet, two and a half years, and interest rates where they're at, labor and materials, the time that this has cost us. I'm afraid that the affordable aspect is, is getting further and further away from us. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Steve, and I am fully sympathetic to how difficult it is today to find a connection to Limhi. My question is whether we could make it possible in the future if the opportunity arose by at least making that southern boundary.
Do you like the idea of that? Because it was never an issue with this project of where it could go or that it couldn't, you know, that we were trying to move buildings. So a plat note would be an easy thing to add. I do think both properties on either side of the Limhi property that we were talking about are older and could redevelop at some point, and so.
That's what I was thinking, too. My, my only other comment. You have a walkway to the trash collection from the units on the south, and it stops at the trash collection. Then there's a walkway from the units on Paloo's to the sidewalk. But if I live to the south, there's no clear path for me to walk to Paloo's. So there's an assumption, I guess, that I would never do that, and I think that that's probably not the right assumption. That's the one thing I see on this final plat that I'd like to get fixed.
Okay, okay. I think we can address that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
With that, I'll close the public hearing. Are you talking to me?
No, I'm talking to the lady.
Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and make this motion. I move approval of Crew James subdivision, excuse me. Oh, yeah, I'm on the right one. S U B twenty-two dash fifty-four Boise City preliminary plat at twenty-eight oh one West Paloo's in an R two D D A zone with the following two conditions, that there be a plat note on the southern boundary for a future connection if one arises, and that the walkway from the units on the south be connected to Paloo's.
Second. We have a motion, a second discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
It's correct that we've seen this project a few times now in different iterations. I really think that this proposal takes in, I mean, all of the concerns that we've heard with appropriateness for the neighborhood. You know, it was brought up that this isn't exactly what currently exists in the neighborhood, and I think that the expectation that single-family, single-story homes are built with these kind of land prices is just not realistic. We're going to see a lot more attached housing being built. It's affordable. These are townhomes. These are single-family homes. They're just attached. They have, they share a wall or two walls with their neighbors. And I think that the massing, the variation in the facade is much more appropriate and and much more complimentary than what we've seen before. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I, I appreciate the concerns of the neighbors, but I also appreciate how hard this developer's worked to find some solutions. It looks to me, with the exception of the two things that I asked for, that that they've been successful in finding solutions to those, and this is desperately needed, housing in a location in the city where it does have good access to jobs and, and services, and we'll be supporting the motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just like to echo my support. I think, you know, it's, it's really hard to find a balance, and I appreciate the neighbor's concern, but this has gone through quite a few iterations. It's time to approve this, and I, I think there's been a lot of accommodations made, and and we have to look for lots of different kinds of housing, and this is one of them.
All right, Clerk, we call the roll.
Agent?
Yes.
Clegg?
Yes.
Hallie Burton?
Yes.
Willetts?
Yes.
Weddings?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, we're going to take up this last subdivision, and then we will take a break. And so we've got S O S twenty-two dash twenty-five. We've got Delaney back. Welcome, Delaney Garlic from P D S. And the applicant, Dennis Torres. Is the applicant online?
Yes, the applicant is online.
All right, we don't expect any Neighborhood Association to be here. Please let me know if I'm wrong. And I had one member of the public, Henry Houst, sign up to testify. Is Henry online?
No, he does not appear to be online.
Okay, so at this point, there's no public here to testify on this. Delaney, go ahead, and then we'll check in with the applicant on your conditions.
Great. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you is a request to vacate a front setback plat note located at one zero seven East Parkway Drive in a R one B zone. This vacation is to allow for a proposed addition to an existing home to be constructed to the R one B standards. However, with the Nelson's River Parkway subdivision, a plat note for a forty-foot front setback exists with the, the existing home being built in nineteen seventy to the R one B standards. With this vacation, the addition would be constructed to the twenty-foot standard as well and would be subject to the R one B development standards. The planning team recommends approval, and I'll stand if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, now, Mr. Torres, Dennis Torres with Rosson Construction Group, the applicant. Will you let us know if you're in terms, in agreement with, with the terms and conditions of the staff report?
Ah, yes, in agreement.
All right. Is there anybody here to testify on this item? The record will reflect as such, and with that, I'm going to close the hearing.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve S O S twenty-two dash twenty-five Rosson Construction Group Boise City Vacation of Plat Note, one seventy East Parkway Drive.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second. Clerk, we call the roll.
Agent?
Yes.
Clegg?
Yes.
Hallie Burton?
Yes.
Willetts?
Yes.
Weddings?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Great, thank you. We're going to take a five-ish minute break. When we come back, it looks like the first three items, we've got staff reports, applicants, but we don't expect public testimony, so let me know if that's different when we get to them, but otherwise, we'll probably follow a similar format with the exception that findings will have to be included in the motions that we make. All right, thank you. Get us organized to get going because we've got our quorum walking to the dais. The, we were going to move into public hearing, C R twenty-two dash fifteen. We've got Sabrina back, Sabrina Mortenson, thank you. No rush, we're, I'm just getting us organized, Councilmember. And the applicant, George Cooper, hello, sir. We don't expect anyone from Suaca to testify. Is that, no, you're not Suaca. Is that the case? Is there any Neighborhood Association presence here with us this evening, or anybody from the public expected, expecting to testify on this? All right, there's nobody here to testify on this one. Go ahead, Sabrina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is a request to rezone approximately one point seven five acres located at seventeen fifteen South Maple Grove Road from R one A to R one V D A. I'm not sure why the slides aren't showing.
Well, we, we can see them.
Oh, okay. Okay, the subject property is located approximately four hundred and twenty feet south of the intersection of Overland Road and Maple Grove Road. Is it, it is designated as mixed use on the land use map within which the proposed R one B zone is allowed. The surrounding area is comprised of a mix of single-family homes, vacant parcels, religious institutions, and commercial uses along. The surrounding area is comprised of a mix of single family homes, vacant parcels, religious institutions and commercial uses along Overland Road. Other land use designations within a half mile of the site include suburban, commercial and industrial. If the rezone is approved, the applicant intends to divide the property to create three additional residential parcels. The site is within the B one airport influence area, which conditionally allows a maximum residential density of five units per acre. The airport has provided comments indicating no opposition to the current request. The Planning and Zoning Commission found that the proposed R one B zone is the most appropriate for the site as it will allow for increased residential density near an existing activity center. While conforming to the requirements of the B one airport influence area. The proposal is also consistent with the comprehensive plan, which encourages a land use pattern that increases opportunities for housing and community services while retaining the distinctive rural elements of southwest Boise. A development agreement is required to restrict residential density on the property to a maximum density of four point eight units per acre. And to ensure that an navigation easement will be recorded in compliance with airport requirements. In conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the rezone and the associated development agreement, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
This isn't a question for Sabrina. I just want to flag something for follow up. In the airport letter, in the airport agency comment, there's a memo with some action requested. On the adoption of an interim policy to. Oh, gosh, where is it? Anyway, it's a policy addressing the airport area of influence. And so I would just like to flag that for follow up. So that we can discuss addressing that through a policy change.
Can that be noted by PDS staff? Great, thank you. Sir, is there anything else you'd like to add to the application report? Any questions for the applicant? Want to confirm, nobody is here to testify on this? In the affirmative. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve C R twenty-two dash fifteen Westminster Homes seventeen fifteen South Maple Grove. Rezone of approximately one point seven five acres from R one A to R one B with a development agreement.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say I know this area really well and I'm excited that there's going to be some housing there. Thank you.
All right, clerk?
Agent.
Yes.
Flag.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, next up, C R twenty-two dash twenty-nine will follow the same procedure. So Sabrina again, Josh Shiverick. Hello, sir. We do not expect Sina to testify. Please let us know if that's, if you're here. And then nobody signed up in advance. Is anybody here to testify on this item? How about online? All right, nobody's here to testify on that, this one. So with that, Sabrina, go ahead. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this item is a request to annex approximately thirteen acres located at ninety-one eighty-one South Federal Way with a zoning designation of M one D. The subject property is located within the city's area of impact and above city limits to the north and east. Their existing city services in the vicinity and the costs associated with the requested annexation are anticipated to be minimal. The surrounding area is primarily comprised of industrial and commercial developments with M one, M two and T two zoning designations. The site is located within the airport influence area B, within which residential uses are prohibited. The Planning and Zoning Commission found the proposed M one D zone to be consistent with the surrounding area and with the comprehensive plan, which designates the site as industrial on the land use map. If the annexation is approved, the applicant intends to vacate the undeveloped right of way, consolidate the parcels and construct a maintenance and repair shop for heavy equipment. Accessory office and sales space would also be included. The proposed use would be allowed within the M one D zone and design review approval would be required prior to building permits. In conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the annexation, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, the applicant, do you have anything additional to add? All right, I'll take that as you're in agreement with the recommendation. Want to confirm, nobody is here to testify on this? With that, I'll close the hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of C R twenty-two dash twenty-nine ninety-one eighty-one South Federal Way. Annexation of approximately thirteen acres with an M one D zone and the associated reason statement.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, discussion. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Flag.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thanks. And next up, C R twenty-two dash eighteen, got Delaney back. And then the applicant, Mandy Boom, sorry, Boom, Boom. Hi, great. And we don't expect the north end to be here, Nina to be here. And we don't have anybody that's signed up in advance. Let me know if anybody's here to testify on this. Nobody's online either. All right, with that, go ahead, Delaney.
Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you is a request for a rezone. Subject property is located at the corner of Eighth Street and State Street with Eighth Street identified as a key north-south multimodal corridor. And currently, the site includes a vacant bank and surface parking lot. The adjacent properties to the northeast and west are zoned LOD limited office with designer view and to the south across State Street is C five DD. Central business with downtown designer view. The area is comprised of a mix of commercial office, religious institutions and historic uses. The property is designated as downtown mixed use on the land use map. This project site is within the west side downtown urban renewal district within their expansion area within the U R D. CCDC plans to assist with connectivity infrastructure improvements along North State Street between State and Franklin. The site is approximately five hundred and eighty feet northwest of the downtown Boise Regional Activity Center with the state Capitol grounds to the southeast. The applicant requests a rezone of approximately point four two acres to the C five DD slash DA zone, central business district. With downtown designer view and development agreement, the planning team finds that this proposed zone to be appropriate for the property. Due to the fact that the boundary of the U R D was expanded to include this block, which shifts downtown planning to the north. There is C five DD directly to the south and within proximity, the site is within proximity to downtown and would be appropriate use. The proposed zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and development within the area. With the free zone request, the applicant plans to develop the six-story structure comprised of basement level parking. First floor retail space, fronting state and Eighth Street. Second floor commercial and office space with the third, fourth, fifth and sixth floor dedicated to residential uses. In order to ensure future development provides the required improvements, a DA was included with this application. This will prohibit vehicular access from state and eighth and require all vehicular access to be taken from the alley. The DA also requires the applicant to provide the ground floor activation and work with City of Boise, CCDC. And ACHD on future frontage street scape improvements. See, public comments were received, both during review and as late correspondence. They detail concerns with obstructed use. Incompatibility with the historic character, mixed use not being appropriate in this location. And safety concerns due to the height and proximity to government buildings. As such, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? All right. Ms. Boom, do you have anything additional to add? All right, is there anybody online that's here to testify on this item? Before I close this.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
We did have some concerns from the public noted in the staff report, and I guess I'd like to just. Address two of those. One is that it's not compatible with the historic nature.
I'm going to suggest that this is likely, since nobody's here to testify, you're not asking questions, part of deliberations, so that.
Okay.
Unless you've got questions for staff, I prefer they just.
Okay.
The reasons be provided in the record.
That's fine, I can do it then. I just want to make sure and get it on the record.
Great, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, take a motion and then some discussion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve C R twenty-two dash eighteen Hummel Architects eight hundred West State Street. Rezone of approximately point four two acres from LOD to C five DD dash DA.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. I'll go ahead with the council member with discussion.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. We don't know. Whether this is compatible or not, because what we have to be for us is a rezone, not a, not as a plan for a building. And I guess I would encourage, as this building goes forward, to look at the historic nature of the neighborhood and. At least respect it with the design. The other thing that was contended is that this is not a good place for mixed use. And in fact, I think it's the perfect place for mixed use.
Madam Mayor. I have sort of a nostalgic attachment to this building. It's like a great building that I've driven by ever since I was a little kid. And as much as I love that building, and I think it's really cool to see that unique architecture. This is the perfect place to see in my mind more mixed use and to see denser development so close to downtown. And with some of the things mentioned in the application, it's really the types of things I think we would love to see more with this close proximity to the area. And so I think this is an easy yes for me.
Madam Mayor, I echo Council President Protem Hallie Burton's sentiments about the uniqueness of this building. I'm a huge mid-century fan, and every time I drive by it, I'm like, oh, somebody will do something cool with that building someday. And it's just like never happened. And it's not going to happen because old bank buildings are really hard to beneficially reuse. They have awkward layouts. It, you know, it's just, it's not the best use of this space. And I understand that. Even as much as I love it. And this is a great spot for mixed use. And in fact, we've approved a very similar development. Right across the street from the Boise Co-op, and I think it's still entitled, though it's changed ownership, and that's way farther into the north end. So I think that given, given that context, the proximity to downtown, what's going to be happening with the YMCA. This is a really great spot for a development of this kind. And I think that this area is just going to become more activated. In the future. Thank you.
Thanks. And I gotta say, I too love this building. I'm super curious about what's going to happen with the stones, but I didn't want to take up. Hearing time to ask and get the answer. So hopefully I can get it after, because there are just a couple of homes in this city and there's a couple in the hills and there's a couple of other places that have that same rock. It's pretty special. Clerk, will you take the roll, please?
Agent.
Yes.
Flag.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And now we're going to move into, you're here for this one? Okay. We're, we're going to move into C R twenty-two dash fourteen. Thanks, everybody that's leaving. Have a good evening. We're going to start with Tim Keen here then from the applicant. We've got Dave Kengas here for Vista. Looks like Tam, I'm sorry, I got to put my glasses on. Tammy Zokan has signed up in advance from the public. If there's anybody else online, just raise your hand. We'll do questions and then we'll hear from the applicant again.
Mayor, I just wanted to mention, as we get into this and Delaney will go through the staff recommendation. In the summer of of this year, we met with the applicant and in this case. And said that we felt strongly that what they were proposing at the time wasn't good enough. And I wanted to. Give the applicant credit for substantially starting over at that time and the incredible job they've done. To improve the design and work with their neighbors such that. The two developments that will be happening adjacent to one another on Victory, I would argue, are the best designed of any, anything in the suburbs in Boise. And, and so they really put their hearts into this in the summertime. Of course, have been meeting with the neighborhood, have every step of the way said, we will make whatever improvements to Victory or other improvements. That we need to make in conjunction with this. So we've just had a really, it's important to acknowledge the degree to which this applicant has. Been seeking to do something really distinctive and of great value here. So. Delaney is going to go through our recommendation, which goes through the technical aspects of it, but I did want to start with that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tim, and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is a request for a rezone and subdivision. And just as a reminder, this was deferred from the November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two hearing. I'm going to give a really brief, high-level overview of the project since we've heard this before, and then provide some details on the updates that have happened since our last discussion. And so to provide context, the project site is approximately eighteen acres at two five two one West Victory Road. Directly adjacent to the site on the east is a vacant parcel with anticipated development coming before you soon with similar density. To the west is a five-acre agricultural property. The site has a mixed use designation, which is intended to promote the more compact pedestrian and transit oriented pattern of development. The rezone request is to go to R three, which would allow for a maximum of forty-three and a half units per acre. The proposed project would have a total density of just under twenty units per acre. A development agreement is included, which provides assurances that the goals of the neighborhood will be supported. And if any modifications occur, another public hearing would be required. On October third, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved an associated PUD for three hundred and fifty-eight multifamily residential units. Comprised of three-story apartments and townhomes. The proposed buildings are within the maximum allowed forty-five-foot height limit in the R three zone district. So since we last met, both applicant and city staff had opportunities to meet with ACHD. Mainly to discuss traffic impacts and potential mitigation. And so as a result, ACHD has provided an addendum to their original staff report detailing additional traffic mitigation. And just real briefly, I'll go over that. And so there will be a, the applicant will be required to contribute a proportional share of cost. Associated with the design and construction of a pedestrian hybrid beacon, which would be located off-site. At Melad and Federal Way at that intersection. Additionally, ACHD has agreed that installing a raised crosswalk on Victory in front of this property would. Aid in the traffic calming and mitigation. For the area. Additionally, there's going to be, to mitigate potential impacts on area roadways. The applicant is required to provide a road trust deposit for a speed bump on both Columbus and Canal. Lastly, planning staff amended a condition of approval to require the multi-use pathway to be constructed. Not only along the southern and western boundary, but to carry that along Victory Road, along the frontage. This is to allow for a cohesive design between both this project and the neighboring site, which is being redeveloped to the east. And this will offer on-street parking on Victory to also aid in that traffic calming that we are hoping for. So with that, I will stand for questions, but our Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval, and you do have the final decision tonight. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Yep.
The decision by ACHD to, I assume it was at the direction of ACHD to put the pedestrian hybrid beacon at. Melad means that if you approach Federal Way after crossing the railroad track on Victory. If we do end up with pedestrian and bike facilities on that approach. You'll end up on the southwest side of Federal Way. At a five-foot sidewalk and with no accommodation to get to either the pedestrian hybrid beacon or the full signal. At the intersection with the approach down to Broadway. Wonder if any consideration had been given to improvements along Federal Way on that side. To accommodate the movement to one or more of those signals.
Madam Mayor, Council President Flag, at this time, the off-site mitigation was just for that. PHB crossing. I'm sure we can definitely ask ACHD and maybe include it in that priority of lists for things for the five-year work plan. Also, if we want to recommend for the developer that is on the table tonight.
And Justin, I don't know if you have any comments on why that location was chosen. Would love to hear him.
Yes, and Justin, thanks for being here tonight.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, for the record, my name is Justin Lucas. I'm the Deputy Director of Planning and Project Management at the Highway District. Once again, glad to be here. So there's various different things going on as we deal with this access to the Federal Way path. If you're familiar with the area, Victory kind of takes an odd jog and connects to Federal Way. But there's actually a section of right of way on Victory Road that continues and you can. You can basically access the signal that exists at Broadway through that kind of jog. I believe it's the St. Luke's Laundry Facility there or something like that. But there's a, if you look at an aerial photograph, there's some opportunities there for more direct connectivity to a crossing that exists today. So there's, there's that, which I think needs to be considered, and we took into consideration. And then it depending on which direction of travel you're headed, I mean, if you're headed kind of, I always get my directions on Federal Way because it kind of wraps around there. But if you're headed towards Micron on Federal Way, you're likely going to go kind of towards that Broadway crossing that exists today. If you're headed the other direction, we think Melad is a really good option for people not only from this proposed development, but from the neighborhood that exists here today and then has existed for a long time. So I hope that explains kind of some of the justification for why we went in this direction. Placing a, an additional crossing at the intersection of Victory and Federal Way creates some complications due to the proximity to the existing Broadway signal. You know, this is accessed, this is a busy corridor, as you're aware, and there's access to Broadway going on to I-84. There's a lot going on here, and we do have some concerns that adding an additional intersection at the, at Victory would potentially create some safety issues, to be honest. And so that's why we're looking at Melad and the existing crossing at Broadway.
Thank you. And if I could follow up, the, given the cost of an additional crossing at Victory, it seems like the cost of improving the connection either to Melad or to Broadway would be actually relatively minimal. So that, right now, you can get to the Broadway because it's, you're, you'll be traveling in the right direction. But if you're going to travel to Melad, you're on a relatively narrow sidewalk against the flow. And so it seems like we ought to at least consider that as we go forward with this design. So I thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? All right, we'll go ahead and hear from the applicant again.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Deborah Nelson, 601 West Bannock Street in Boise, here on behalf of the applicant. And I have members of the team with me this evening that are also available to answer questions. I just thought this, we might just jump right into this slide and pick up with some of the visual description of what Delaney just walked through. And instead of just showing you what we're doing, we wanted to provide this comprehensive look because I think that's what you asked for at the last hearing was what's happening in the entire area. And so this shows improvements that are being required by ACHD of this development and the neighboring development through these discussions, as Delaney described, that have taken place since the last hearing. It also describes some of the ACHD planned improvements. So maybe we could just walk through some of them. It, and sorry for the scale, it does make it a little bit hard to see, but I wanted you to see the pathways going up to the elementary school because Councilmember Clegg had asked about that connection path. So, but if you, if, if I can walk through them, I mean, first of all, if we start on our immediate frontage, we've got the raised crossing that's going to go and connect and provide connection to that Helen Way. And then our neighboring property is being required to put in three raised crossings. Councilmember Hallie Burton, you asked at the last hearing whether these would be raised or not, and they are going to be raised. That's part of the requirement. So there is now a requirement for four along Victory. There is, as Delaney mentioned, also a requirement for both developments, not just ours that she walked through, but additional funds to be contributed to Road Trust for future traffic calming on Columbus and Canal that ACHD did not feel was warranted yet, but they wanted to make sure they had the funds when it is. And they didn't think they wanted to put those improvements in at this time, based on recent study of those streets. We've also got the, the Crossing Beacon on Federal Way, where there was just some discussion at Melad. That is a requirement for both developments to contribute to the funding of that beacon. Then if we look at some of the improvements that are planned by ACHD that I think also support some of the discussion that was just happening between ACHD and Councilmember Clegg about why Melad. So Melad Street between Federal Way and Annette is, first of all, it's designated by ACHD as a low-stress bikeway. And it continues down south on Annette and then west on, on Canal all the way out to Vista. And so that is the path that's designated for the low-stress bikeway between. It's, it's not to drop down on Victory. It's actually to, to stay up there. We recognize that we are down on Victory and we will be sending people up to this. So, but that's the, the pathway that really feeds kind of that shortest distance between those, those areas. And in particular, it's worth noting that on Melad, that does, that street section between Annette and Federal Way is listed in the Integrated Five-Year Work Plan. And it is actually sooner than the improvements that have been discussed at our last hearing and at your work session today on, on Victory. And so the, the sidewalks that are on Melad and bike facilities that are planned are scheduled for design in 2023, this year. So they are in ACHD's budget already with a dollar amount. That means that the right-of-way is already budgeted and scheduled for 2024. So that's happening very quickly. And then after that, as you know, in the five-year work plan, the first two are in ACHD's budget. And then the others, you hope to quickly follow. And as was testified in the work session, that's the norm, is that they quickly follow. So Melad should be done in relatively short order with new pedestrian facility sidewalks, with new bike facilities, and that will feed in great to connect out to the Crossing Beacon on Federal Way. So we hope that with the developments, contributions, that both developers' contributions to the area and those that are planned by ACHD, we've really helped to address some of these off-site existing but will be exacerbated by development conditions to help pedestrian and bike facilities in the area. Additionally, just want to highlight on, on Victory Road, and this is through an extensive amount of work by the city staff, to work with ACHD on those improvements. The council had really asked for speed and traffic calming, and the neighbors have asked for that. And our original design was based on ACHD's street scape and preferred plans there. But through a lot of collaboration and meetings, now there is agreement to move the bike lane off of the street as originally planned, to put it in this off-street multi-use path, as, as Delaney described. And that allows now on-street parking. And that is what was requested by the council along at least the straight frontage of Victory, where the developments are, to help really narrow down that street view and help with speeding in the area. So that's a great win for everyone because the developer was willing to do whichever was approved. And the city really advocated for that. So that's worked out very well. So just a couple of other quick comments. We talked about this at the last hearing, and it came up at the work session today. So I just wanted to comment again. In addition to the contributions for these off-site improvements that are now added to the development through additional conditions from ACHD that the developer is agreeable to, they will be paying $678,410 in impact fees. Councilmember, Council President Weddings, I know that you have correctly made the comment that that doesn't mean they go right in the immediate neighborhood. But you do have, but it's a lot of money that's contributed from this development. It is there, it's the same money for them. And of course, you've got the adjacent development. They'll be contributing an even larger share with their size. But you do have some control over that. I mean, through, as was discussed at the work session, through your priorities, that that is how you, you know, tell ACHD how you want to spend that money locally. And currently, and visiting with ACHD about that, they are spending a great proportion of their impact fees on pedestrian and bike facilities in Boise because that's where a lot of them are needed as a result of infill development. And so hopefully with the tools that you have, if there is any reprioritization that's needed with Victory, we certainly support additional improvements there. But Melad is in, is happening in, in short order. Neither of them, of those improvements are cap, are in the CIP, so they are not impact fee credit eligible. Councilmember Clegg, you had asked about that earlier, so I just wanted to make sure we're aware of that. So with that, I, I just want to cover the landscape of a lot of the discussions we've had and stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor, quick question, Deb. I'm really glad to hear about the multi-use path on the south side of Victory. It's always been my understanding that ACHD's policy doesn't support on-street parking on collectors. Have they waived that policy in this case?
They did agree to that, Councilmember Clegg, and which is great. Again, I think through the collaboration and discussion here, they said that if the bike facility is pulled out of the street, then they could support the on-street parking because it's separated.
Great. That's great to hear. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kengas?
Madam Mayor and council, my name is Dave Kengas. I reside at 1715 West Canal Street. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Vista Neighborhood Association. As we, at the previous meeting, we spoke about how well this developer was to work with. We really appreciated the design of the project, the scope of it. It met all of our needs. We really didn't have much to add to it. It wasn't, they weren't asking for excessive height. It was well parked. The parking was hid within the development. It, it just worked for what the site was there. Of course, we would love to have a big park there, but that wasn't in the cards. The big issue was dealing with the traffic and the impacts, which we've made tremendous leaps and bounds in addressing those needs. The traffic mitigation memo that came out from ACHD recently, we fully support and agree to. I mean, it's, it addresses a lot of things. And with the council work session today, the five-year work plan projects are now at top of mind and getting addressed, which we just weren't there previously. We didn't have any idea what was going on. So I'm going to talk mainly about our perspective from the five-year work plan. If you look at Victory Road and you look at the, think about the crossing and the amount of traffic going there, that is obviously a big priority. You know, it's just not safe for that amount of traffic mixing with pedestrian bicyclists. However, if we prioritize it in the construction timeline, my fear is, is that we'll be rebuilding that at the same time these two big projects are under construction. And we'll be diverting a lot of construction traffic through a neighborhood that doesn't have a safe route. Melad's not done. So from that perspective, timing, I think the focus should be towards completing Melad, the crossing, the hybrid signal. Decide on what Melad is going to look like because the north side of Melad has no sidewalks. It has sidewalks on the south side in front of the storage unit complex between the railroad tracks and Federal Way. So it might be that we do a bike path down one side, sidewalks down the other for pedestrians. I, I don't know. That's something to be worked out. But if we complete the sidewalks on Melad and Annette, because Annette is the primary route to Hawthorne coming out of the Vista Point project. The Vista corner of Victory and Annette is where Vista Point will exit. And that's going to be a straight shot to Target over to Hawthorne. Annette between Melad and Target has no sidewalks. It's narrow. It needs, it needs some work. So focusing in that area and completing that while the construction is getting built, then when timing works out, funding works out to get Victory done, that traffic has a safe route to divert into the neighborhood, and we're not dealing with the construction traffic. Most of that is going to be done. I do have a question for ACHD is because there is a, they're also looking at putting a signal at Target in front of the post office because of the apartment complex there. So it seems that now would be the time to make a decision on exactly where a light is going to go. We, you know, definitely we need some kind of protected crossing across Federal Way. I prefer Melad because when I leave my neighborhood and I want to go downtown and take a left on Victory, I go to Melad. I don't go to Victory. At Victory and Federal Way, there's an island in the middle of Federal Way, so you do not have a protected turn lane. You gotta go across, you know, diagonal hide there while traffic goes around. And traffic backs up at the light at Broadway, so lots of times you don't have a clear trying, clear vision area at busy times. You might commit and go, and then, oh, here comes a car. Then you really have no place to go, and lots of times that car will be turning left right in front of you. So I just, that's why I have always pushed for a signal down at Melad because the left turn traffic is going to go there. He just brought up a great idea on, when they put the Broadway intersection in, they rerouted Victory away from the Broadway on-ramp. So now Victory does a curve to Federal Way, and then there's a straight shot that's just dead. You know, there's just parking there. But that would be a great pathway to get to the crosswalk at the light at Broadway, the Broadway signal. I didn't even think about that until just now. So, one, there's one other additional item. The ACHD bikeway comes down Melad to Virginia to Canal. Virginia between Canal and Melad has no sidewalks on the east side. The west side has some sidewalks or just one gap of two homes. So that does not, I don't think that shows up or is, is in the projects for the five-year work plan. There's a lot of sidewalks in that little area between Annette, Melad, and Virginia that need to be filled out. When you look the city's pathway coming from Federal Way down Victory, and then having an ACHD bikeway coming down Melad, Virginia to Canal, it seems disjointed because it just don't seem like a coordinated plan to me. Victory is pretty much that, the east side of the railroad tracks is built out with curb gutter and sidewalk. It's been improved. Now, when you look at the multimodal pathway that is being proposed and built on Victory, it will end at Annette. And then from Annette to the railroad tracks, you have built-out homes. You don't have the right-of-way to build that kind of multimodal pathway. So it doesn't really, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to try to force that pathway because of the, those issues. To me, it seems to make sense to just go down Annette to Melad and over and make it, you know, then it's all connected. And there's just one, and everybody is working together towards one good completed pathway, rather than a couple disjointed ones that really just don't seem to mesh real well. So I think we've made a lot of progress. We definitely support the ACHD memo for the mitigation, especially the speed bumps on Columbus and Canal. We anticipate traffic increasing there, but we just don't know how that'll develop until these things are built out. And appreciate the time taken to look at the five-year work plan because that was the one thing left hanging in the air.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions?
Madam Mayor, thanks, Dave. I really appreciate you being here and, and having worked with the folks through this. So if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that the ACHD bike network that we're showing right now up on the screen should continue on Annette down to Victory rather than stop at Canal as it does currently. And by doing that, you'd connect the improvements on Victory to the improvements on Annette and, and Melad.
To me, that makes sense. It just.
And that would be the short-term plan to try and do that, as well as look at any sidewalk gaps in that immediate area as, as that plan is done. Try to get that completed early in the five-year work. as, as that plan is done. Try to get that completed early in the five-year work plan. Now, I just want to clarify on the second part. I, I assume you're still in favor of at some point connecting across the railroad tracks on Victory with some pedestrian and/or bike facilities. And at that point, I think you rightly point out that we could do wayfinding to direct people who might be headed further out rather than in to go to the Broadway crossing on the old section of Victory.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, definitely Victory needs to be done. It's the question of timing and realizing how much construction traffic these two large projects are going to generate.
Right.
I just, if we prioritize and push it now, they're just going to be going on at the same time and create kind of a traffic nightmare for the neighborhood with diverted traffic.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a quick question for Dave. Dave, in the last piece of your comments, were you suggesting that you're opposed to the multimodal pathway being built in front of these developments?
What's that now?
Were you, were you saying that you're opposed to the multimodal pathway being?
No. The multimodal pathway, the way they have it designed down Victory in front of these developments is outstanding.
Okay, great. I missed a misunderstood.
On-street parking, putting it into the street, you don't have on-street parking. It's just that when it ends, which will end at Annette, it's hard, going to be hard to fit it in east down Victory. It, you know, it's built out and it just makes more sense to me anyway to divert that down Annette and then Millad and over.
Okay, I got you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank. Anybody else here to talk on this matter? Would you like some, any further?
Could I ask one more quick question of Justin?
I guess. Justin, will you please take an extra question?
Absolutely.
Thanks for being here again, Justin. So a quick question. It's a short section of bikeway designation from Canal to Victory. I don't know what treatments you're planning on those bikeways, but how difficult would it be to, to add that section to connect to Victory?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, are you, are you referencing Annette, the, the connection on the net?
On Annette from Canal to Victory right now is not shown on the bikeway map, but it would connect in the full network.
Right. And I had a chance, I was looking at my, my map as, as you were discussing that. So currently that section of Annette, it has sidewalks on both sides and it's a relatively short segment with allows parking. You know, this is a, you know, an emerging conversation on how we deal with these types of situations. To be honest, today, you know, I think most people would feel relatively comfortable using that segment of Annette on a, on a bicycle based on its current configuration. And, and although this development, there will be increased traffic in the area, I believe that in the future, most people would feel comfortable on that section of Annette based on the LTS guidelines, the level of traffic stress guidelines that we've developed. So I know there's, you know, differences of opinion related to sharos and things like that. But this is a, basically a local street. It's a neighborhood street, like many streets in the north end, other streets on the bench where people ride their bike every day. So I think there's a map designation, there's a bikeway designation. Ultimately, every local street on the bench operates in some way or another as a bikeway or a pedestrian facility. So I think we can use wayfinding signage as we've discussed. If we want to enhance kind of the direction of travel, indicating to people which way might be the best route depending on where they're headed. I think those kinds of things are really reasonable and doable and certainly can be included in, in work as we go out into that area.
Super. Thank you.
Anything further? All right, you're welcome. Come on.
Mayor, members of the council, I can be very brief. Just to answer some of the questions we were going to touch on. And maybe the only additional thing to note is that further up on Annette, north of Millad is also in the Integrated Five-Year Work Plan. And it also has a design year of 2023 and right-of-way acquisition in 2024. And so that will be improved further up. And as, as was noted, there are sidewalks already on the south, but it will be, have new pedestrian facilities sooner rather than later as well. So continuing on that same stretch that Dave pointed us to. And that's all I have unless you have questions.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve CAR 22-14, 2521 West Victory Road rezone of approximately 18.6 acres from A1 to R3DDA.
Second.
We have a motion, a second discussion?
Madam Mayor, just wondering, do we need to reference the agreements that were made on the traffic here or in the subdivision? I don't know. Just to ensure that we heard what those agreements were and we agree with them. I don't, I don't know where is the appropriate place on the rezon. That's what I was thinking. Yeah.
Would you be willing to amend your motion?
Yes, I will amend my motion to approve the rezone with the traffic agreements of amending it to include on-street parking as agreed to by ACHD, the traffic beacon on Federal Way and the developer contribution, the raised crosswalks.
And the traffic calming bond.
And the traffic calming bond. You got them? Oh, got it. Okay, yeah.
Secondary is an agreement.
Thank you.
Great. And just let the record reflect that agreements were delineated, but it's inclusive of others discussed and presented by staff and the applicant tonight. Just to be sure that we got it all.
Yeah.
Great. And with that, any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to point out that this is exactly what I was hoping for when we deferred this was just to get a better picture of what the future of this street is going to be given the intensity of development. This is a lovely development. I absolutely enjoy that there's so many pathways and so much connectivity and how much that this will actually add to the neighborhood. And so just really want to thank everyone from ACHD and the city and the developers who work together to bring us this additional context. It really helped out.
Madam Mayor, I just want to echo. Thank you. I know that this has been a long haul. I appreciate you sticking with us. I think it's going to be delightful. I'd like to thank the neighbors. I think we, we just have a much better, we've had a much better process and I think we're going to have a much better outcome. And I think the people that are going to live there are going to be the beneficiaries. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, I was going to say my comments for the subdivision, but just to make things smooth and to get them done with now is a good time to do it. Yeah. So just a couple of things. One, I really appreciate the developers' work in those raised crosswalks. Very simple thing that can make a really huge difference and we don't see it a lot in Boise. And it's just such a simple thing to be able to do to add that level of safety. And I would love to see more stuff like this coming forward. And then to the Neighborhood Association, I want to be very clear when I say this. I am not promising that I will make sure that this area is in the top 20 for that consolidated five-year work plan. I'm not promising that, but I will make sure that I personally include this area in that discussion so that we can evaluate those other projects. Because I don't have those other projects in front of me right now, just no way that I can actually say that.
I don't be voting, but I, I just want to say a couple of things. I really appreciate, you know, the words that Tim Keen shared at the beginning really do stand. I appreciate the work that the developer and applicant has done with the neighborhood. Appreciate the work that the neighborhood did with the developer and applicant as well as with ACHD. Thank you for being here tonight and with our team. This is one of those instances where, you know, if it's okay if I reference this, I asked Dave because after the last meeting, I was really intrigued by the conversation that was had from the neighborhood because it was so different than what we often hear. And I, I just asked Dave, you know, what it was about this that, that made this different. And much of it was the relationship building and collaboration that was, or that was my take on the conversation. And the collaboration that was made possible by the applicant. And that matters. It really matters. As we seek to ensure that we have a home for everyone in this community, we recognize that our city is changing, that we want to hold dear the parts of Boise, which I think is really the people, place, and spirit of this place. Hold dear and keep true to who we are as our neighborhoods change. Those relationships matter. So I thank you for that. I thank all of you for that, frankly, in bringing something much better that's really worthy of this neighborhood and the city for us to consider tonight. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, I'll just add one last thing and, you know, ditto to everything that's been said already. But also want to thank ACHD for their willingness to look at solutions and waive some of their policies so that we could get the best solution. And again, to your point, that's, that's what this looks like when it all works well. So thank you.
And with that, Clerk, will you call the roll? Agent?
Yes.
Clegg?
Yes.
Hallie Burton?
Yes.
Willetts?
Yes.
Woodings?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Seasons on the Bench subdivision, SUB 22-46 Boise City Preliminary Platte, 2521 West Victory Road.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Clerk, will you call the roll? Agent?
Yes.
Clegg?
Yes.
Hallie Burton?
Yes.
Willetts?
Yes.
Woodings?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. And with that, Madam Mayor, I move, we adjourn?
Second.
We have all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.